We have just adjourned from a closed session and I would like to welcome you to this meeting of the Crestwood Board of Education, a regular meeting. I called the meeting to order at 7:05 and I ask our secretary Nadia if she would please take role.
President Ansonik?
Here.
Ms. Berry here, Fawaz, Ms. Fawaz. Ms. Fawaz.
Fawa.
Trustee Fawaz, you might be on mute, just in case.
Oh, unmuter.
Go through the rest of them and then come back, see if she's there.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Ms. Janoon.
Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
And Ms. Krasanik?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Thank you. And the consent agenda, please, Mrs. Berry.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the August 24th, 2020 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, August 10th, 2020, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, August 10th, 2020, and the minutes from the special meeting on August 17th, 2020. Support?
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mrs. Kaminsky, that the Board of Education approve the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the August 24th, 2020 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, August 10th, 2020, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, August 10th, 2020, and the minutes from the special meeting on Monday, August 17th, 2020. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any?
Aye.
Are there any votes?
I just want to, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that, Ms. Fawaz, I'm not getting her vote and I don't want to be...
She's on mute.
Is she?
So what do I do?
I don't know.
Fawa, unmute yourself.
Because she hasn't voted.
We're working on it. I'm asking David if he can help us.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll have this motion carry. And then when she jumps in, because it's, because it carried, it's not a big deal. When she jumps in, we'll just change the vote.
Okay.
Because right now she's unavailable. Not through her fall, but she's unavailable. Okay. Moving on then to our business report. And that would be Ms. Morgan.
Thank you.
Sure.
So we have a couple items in the requisitions. Approval of, number one is approval of the requis- requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for the purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out. In addition, I apologize, the open purchase orders are...
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
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 Madam Chair?
Um, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Oh, Berry. Mrs. Berry.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Berry.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisition per attachment for A1.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment for A1. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
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 Okay, okay, good. Um, for the 4A1, I just had a question about that $700,000 amount listed there for food service. I just wanted to know the timeframe and what that, that one was for.
That's for the entire school year and that's for all of the food service purchases for, for foods for lunch and breakfast. Or the majority of them.
So is, is that us forecasting, like, in person or is that us forecasting to deliver to people?
Is that forecasting to deliver? It's a little bit of both, actually. We did originally set up the PO to forecast if we were going to be in person sooner, so we may not spend that much money. But if we don't, we'll just close the PO at the end of the year and readjust as we evaluate the school year.
Okay.
Anything further from anyone? And then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's so funny to hear you go, aye.
I know. All right, moving on.
Will you please stop?
Number two, approval of Williams Early Childhood Consulting Contract. As part of GSRP, the Great Start Readiness Program contract, the district is required to have an early childhood specialist or ECS as part of the team. The purpose of the ECS is to be a catalyst for the continuous quality improvement of GSRP. The contract will run September 2020 through June of 2021 in the amount of $20,400. The district has contracted with the Williams Early Childhood Consulting since the position was mandated by the state of Michigan in 2017. The contents of the attached contract meet the needs of the district and comparable to previous years. The contract is funded out of GSRP program.
Madam Chair?
Madam President?
Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with Williams Early Childhood Consulting for the 2020, 2021 school year in the amount of $20,400 per attachment eight, I'm sorry, for A2.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Kaminsky, supported by Mrs. Berry, is that right?
Yes.
That the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with Williams Early Childhood Consulting for the 2020, 2021 school year in the amount of $20,400 per attachment for A2. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know, we're still at three classrooms, is that?
Yes.
Are we going to go ahead and try to expand?
They've not provided, they've not provided, asking for additional slots at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I add to that?
Please do.
One of the reasons why we haven't had any spots is because logistically we have nowhere to put them. So I will be coming to the board very soon with discussions on how to possibly attain additional classroom space to expand those positions in the near future.
That's great.
It is great. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we do, if we do increase the classroom, how does that change the amount? What would it vary by?
Change the amount of what?
The, the 20 grand. If we increase the classroom.
Is, do we pay per student?
No, it's in the contract and I want to say it's $6,800 a classroom.
Classroom.
And it's on page 19 of your packet.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, Nadia, did you have a question?
No, that's it, thank you.
And did, um, did I see anyone else's hand up? Okay. Um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number three, approval of the NFHS Network School Broadcast Agreement. The Crestwood School District would like to embark on a five-year partnership with the NFHS Network School Broadcast Broadcast Program to broadcast some of the district's sporting events. Currently, some seasons have been postponed, however, there is still quite a bit of uncertainty if teams will be playing, if fans will be allowed, or if it will even be limited seating. By entering into the agreement, we will be able to broadcast from two venues within the district for the next five years. The games broadcasted would be include freshman, Davey, and varsity. The cost would be a one-time fee of $2,500. The contract has been attached for your review.
Oh, Madam, oh, Madam Chair?
Uh, who is this?
That's, it's Nadia.
I'm sorry, Nadia, yes.
Uh, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the five-year contract with NFHS. Can I, can I ask a question before I do this?
Well, first we'll have, first we'll, first we'll have the, um, motion and support and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, with NFHS Network School Broadcast Program for the 2020, 2021 school year in the amount of $2,500 per attachment for A3? Support.
Okay, we have a, a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education...
Kaminsky, by Ms. Kaminsky, I'm sorry.
No, Garcia said it too.
Okay, I thought, I heard you, you're next to me. Okay, sorry.
That's all right, that the, um, approve the five-year contract with NFHS Network School Broadcast Program for the 2020, 21, 2021 school year in the amount of $2,500 per attachment for A3. Are there any comments, Mrs. Saw Berry?
Does this mean that we take away the broadcasting that is currently being done and, no, right? Okay.
No.
Okay, if you could just elaborate.
Yeah, and I'd like to elaborate on this a little bit. So, uh, when Mr. Shle took over as the Athletic Director, Assistant Principal, we discussed how there are opportunities for us, especially now with the pandemic, where we can broadcast our games live and they will be recorded as well. So we looked at this as a long-term commitment because even when we get out of this pandemic, I think it would, a lot of districts across our league and county are going this route where, um, families can watch games live if they can't come to the game, or people can watch it and/or they're recorded and they can watch them at any time. I myself, as a former athlete, I wish I could have went back and watched myself play after I played a game. But on top of that, to take it to the next level, uh, many of our coaches use this, uh, recording for coaching and practice to review what the athletes did in the games, and this is going to be across the board. So indoor sports and outdoor sports.
Yes, um, Nadia. Or no, I'm sorry, Nija. You're not, you're muted, I think, because I can't hear you.
I can't hear her.
Plug your plug-ins better.
Somebody help her out.
Yeah, we can't hear you. Do your, um, volume button? No. You guys, I'm not muted.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
I wasn't, my, I clicked on mute, but, um, anyway. So, um, not that I really ever missed my son's soccer games, but I think maybe I would have found a little more comfort in not speeding to get there. You know, had, had I, had I had the opportunity to, you know, watch it live, you know, so I think that's a great, it's great.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree, and it's, it's really, it seems to me to be a decent amount, you know, $2,500 is not a bad deal. Um, and also, these films can be used for scouting. That's something that they're always looking for, that we're not always able to, to give.
Well, my husband was always there, recording our, you know, my son's game, so that would have taken him, you know, where he'd been able to sit down and just watch and enjoy the game as opposed to standing up there, recording, so.
He got a scholarship. Didn't your son get a scholarship?
Yeah, to play. Hopefully they play.
Very cool, yeah. Um, okay, is there anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
You're welcome.
Let's see.
Um, thank you very much. I am done for today.
You are? All right. Jeez, that was quick, Ms. Morgan. What's up with that?
Yeah, there, wait till next time. It'll be okay.
Okay, we're moving on to the personnel report. Dr. Lazar?
Yes, we have a couple of appointments this evening. Um, the first is for an elementary music teacher, Elizabeth Juntunen. Ms. Juntunen holds a Bachelor of Music Education from Central Michigan University. She has six years of experience as a music teacher with involvement that goes beyond her classroom to include participation in professional learning communities, starting parent information nights, organizing and hosting school-wide talent shows, and preparing students to perform for residents at a nursing home.
Nice.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Kaminsky?
That the Crest...
Am I on mute?
No, you're just coming in late because you're on the phone.
Oh, okay. That's like the fourth time I said Madam President.
No, I'm not ignoring.
Go ahead, Sue. I, I just wondered if I was on mute.
Okay. I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Elizabeth Juntunen as elementary music teacher for elementary, according to the CFT contract. BA Step 1, effective August 27th, 2020. See Attachment Schedule 5A1.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Kaminsky, supported by, was that Mrs. Janoon?
Berry.
Nadia.
Mrs. Berry, okay. Um, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Elizabeth Juntunen as elementary music teacher for elementary, according to the CFT contract, BA Step 1, effective August 27th, 2020, per attachment Schedule 5A1. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Madam President?
Nadia?
I just wanted to ask about, who, is she replacing someone or are we adding a music teacher?
No, it's not adding. Um, we currently only have one music teacher in the district because the other music position at the elementary moved to the high school full-time. So that left us with a vacancy at the elementary. Um, you'll see with the specials areas, um, with the, there was one PE, one phys ed, and one music position that resulted as, yeah, part of the realignment with the special schedule that was discussed with the board in previous meetings. And so as part of, um, realigning those specials and making them more efficient and, um, you know, improve cost versus the model that we were using before to cover specials and preps, we're working to slowly fill those positions. So no, it is not a new position.
Thank you.
None of, none of the specials areas are.
Madam President, if I may add to that, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
And one additional thing, um, this is also going to help us with efficiency, so we don't have our specials areas teachers traveling all over the district all the time. So it will allow them to build better relationships with their students.
Good. Mrs. Krasanik, did you have something to say?
I just wanted to say that, um, I developed a love of music in elementary school and that I, I have to say that the music teacher was responsible. She had a love for music and it just reeked out of her. And I was in plays, I was in choir, I love music. And I think it's very important that we have music teachers in the elementary school and they do a wonderful job. And it, it started my love for music.
I think that you should work up a little routine for us for the next meeting.
Whatever you want, Madam President.
Thank you very much. We'll get in touch. Is there anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Most, motion carries.
Okay, the second, um, appointment that's being recommended tonight is for school social worker Tegrid El Ghazali. Ms. El Ghazali holds a Masters in Social Work from Wayne State University. She has one year of experience working in school social work where she was highly involved with implementing the Second Steps Program, PBIS, and restorative practices. She's also worked with gleaners in the foster closet of Michigan to provide support for students in need. If I may add to that, Madam President, um, this will complete our social work team after a long and very involved process of...
Good job. Good job.
And I said we couldn't do it.
How about that?
We did it.
Thank you.
So before we get excited, let's have a motion.
Mrs. Ansonik.
Mrs. Krasanik.
Thank you. I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Tegrid El Ghazali for the position of school board social worker at Riverside Middle School, according to the CFT contract. MA Step 1, effective August 27th, 2020. See Attachment Schedule 5A2. I hope I didn't really kill that name.
We have a motion from Mrs. Krasanik, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Tegrid El Ghazali for the position of school social worker at Riverside Middle School, according to the CFT contract. MA Step 1, effective August 27th, 2020, per attachment Schedule 5A2. Is there any discussion?
Um, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say, I'm so excited, you know, that you guys were able to pull this off because we were told it wasn't possible, but thank you very much for doing it.
Yeah, they said it couldn't be done and this is just good for kids. Thank you so much. Is there anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Woo-hoo.
The third recommendation tonight is for a special education resource teacher, Ms. Alyssa Saum. Ms. Saum holds a Bachelor's of Science in Middle Childhood Education and a Master's of Education and Interventionist Specialist from Wright State University. She has five years of experience in middle school education where she has applied focused efforts on building connections with families and providing support for students through assistive technology, differentiated instruction, and individualized lesson planning. I would also like to add to this one, Madam Chair, if I may. Um, Ms. Saum also completes the Special Ed Resource Teacher Team for this time. We originally had two openings, but through some realignments due to the online, um, um, platform for moving forward, um, we're able to hold off on that one for a little bit. So this part of the team is also complete with this.
Fantastic.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Krasanik.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Alyssa Saum for the position of Special Education Resource Teacher at Riverside Middle School, according to the CFT contract, MA Step 3, effective August 27th, 2020. See Attachment 5A3.
Support.
Uh, who was that?
Berry. Berry.
Okay, sorry. Um, we have a motion for Mrs. Krasanik, supported by Mrs. Berry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Alyssa Saum for the position of Special Education Resource Teacher at Riverside Middle School, according to CFT contract, MA Step 3, effective August 27th, 2020. See Attachment Schedule 5A3. Is there any discussion? Great job. Great job, thank you. Nothing further. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All right. Motion carries.
Okay, the fourth recommendation tonight is for the Arabic teacher position at Crestwood High School for Ms. Maya Awada. Ms. Awada holds a Bachelor of Arts and Master's Degree in Arabic Language and Liter- Literature from the Lebanese University of Beirut. She has 11 years of experience as an Arabic teacher. She has also served as a coordinator and department head for the Arabic department at her previous school.
Madam Chair?
Um, Mrs. Berry?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Maya Awada for the position of high school Arabic teacher at Crestwood High School, according to the CFT contract, MA Step 1, effective August 27th, 2020. See Attachment Schedules 5A4.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Maya Awada for the position of high school Arabic teacher at Crestwood High School, according to the CFT contract, MA Step 1, effective August 27th, 2020, per attachment Schedule 5A4. Is there any discussion?
Is this, can I just ask one question? Is this the, are we ever hiring any more Arabic or is this it?
One, there will be one more at the middle school. Um, because of the, uh, high number of students that chose Arabic as a foreign language at the middle school, we will need to hire another Arabic teacher to meet that interest level.
When we decided to offer this, um, to offer a class in Arabic, we weren't sure that would make it a full year. We thought maybe one semester, and now we're going into the middle school. It's fabulous. Um, so we have, uh, I already said that, and who supported that?
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Garcia, okay.
Madam Chair, may I elaborate on that just one more? I would like the community to know as well as the board. The reason why we're pushing the foreign language so much in the middle school is because our students that complete their full year of foreign language through eighth grade and pass an equivalency exam can get a full year credit on their transcript towards graduation and then can go into the next level in high school. So this gives our students even more opportunities.
Yes, thank you.
Anything further from anyone? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries.
And the last recommendation for tonight is for the data analysis specialist position for Mr. Dennis Faletti. Mr. Faletti has long served the Crestwood School District. And in the role of data analysis specialist, um, he will continue to support the Crestwood Schools through assisting the district, centralizing our student assessment data to support and inform instruction to best support the students of Crest.
Madam President?
Mrs. Krasanik.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Dennis Faletti for the position of Data Analysis Specialist, according to the One Year Data Transition Specialist Contract, effective August 27th, 2020. See Attachment 5A5.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Krasanik, supported by Mrs. Kaminsky, is that right?
That was Mrs. Berry.
I'm sorry.
You can take, it's okay.
Okay, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Mr. Dennis Faletti for the position of Data Analysis Specialist, according to the One Year Data Transition Specialist Contract, effective August 27th, 2020, per attachment 5A5. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Um, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Um, I think that this will be a good position for Mr. Faletti because he's been one who's always been compiling numbers together, so I think that's awesome. And just out of curiosity, did we find a place to put him? Because I know we're short on office space.
Uh, I will say that Mr. Favres over at the high school is going to find him a spot where he can work from out of Crestwood.
Nice. Okay, thank you.
Somewhere. Um, was there someone else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Fawaz.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mrs. Fawaz.
For the data analysis specialist, could you elaborate on exactly what those, um, duties are? And is this a created position that we just did now? And what would be the term of this contract?
So, Trustee Fawaz, this is a position we discussed in previous board meetings and it was in, um, previous updates. It is a position wherein Mr. Faletti is going to come work with us for one year, it's a one-year contract, where in turn he is going to be compiling and using all of our standardized data, as well as our school data, to create a data hub for the district that will be, uh, attainable in a one, one place for teachers and administration to use data to drive their instruction, as well as they use data to drive the decision-making for the schools in reference to instructional strategies, social, emotional supports, on and so forth. This is something that we at Crestwood Schools really are in need of. And with our current situation, we felt that, uh, Mr. Faletti would be, uh, because of his experience in compilation of data, that this would be something where he could step into and focus on. Moreover, Mr. Faletti is going to support us in, um, identifying, uh, how we can expand our robotics program. That is something that he's going to be working with Mr. Pete Marabia on because we want to take our robotics from the middle school and expand it to the high school. So, uh, many districts have a person as such. Uh, some districts will contract out a company to do as such, um, where we felt with Mr. Faletti being that he has experience with our district, he can really pull that data together and help us to segregate it and prepare it to help us drive instruction and decision-making.
So he's collecting, like, instructional data, the successes, failures of, of each, or, uh, like, evaluating what works, what doesn't, uh, evaluating the kids it worked for, what, who it didn't?
So he's, no, he's not going to be doing the actual evaluation. The evaluation piece is what the principals will be doing with support of Mr. Faletti, as well as the school improvement teams. The data he will be collecting and he will be creating a data hub for will be three to five years of data on PSAT, SAT, M-Step, NWEA. And now we're currently looking at another assessment tool called iReady. Um, and all of the data from these assessment tools are used in school improvement, as well as district-wide strategic planning to work. So it's not one person that evaluates the data, it's a team of people that evaluate it, but the consolidation of the data is very time-consuming. And this is something where with Mr. Faletti, he can help us, um, be much more efficient in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We hear... We have one informational item.
So the informational item that I wanted to address today is the third school psychologist position that we have been posting. This is one of the positions that has been really difficult to fill and find a qualified candidate for. We want to really take our time because of our focus on social emotional learning and ensure that when we do fill this position, we're filling it with a high... Excuse me, a high-quality candidate who's going to come in and provide strong support and, you know, complete that team as well. It will be focused at the elementary level. So currently, we have been able to fill one of the two school psych positions that we have open. But this is a struggle that has been across many districts, finding somebody for a school psych. So this challenge has not been unique to us. However, we also want to be very graceful and very thoughtful in the choice that we make for that position, to support the social emotional learning and really make for a strong team that can provide the support for our students. I do want to give a shout out to Ms. Melissa Noel, who is the new school psych that was hired to serve at Riverside Middle School a few meetings ago. And I just wanted to say recently, I've heard reports of how integral she's been, having worked at a virtual school before, being able to really lead how we provide those supports and how we do the assessments and testing in a virtual format for our students. And so she's been very vital in that process, on that team. And so kudos to her and thank you to her for her immediate... She's jumped on board and already, you know, I have this idea. Is it too early? And it's like, absolutely not. We want to hear everything you have. And so that's where we are with that third position. And just wanted to bring it up because I know it's been open and we've hosted several times and wanted to address that.
Okay. So we'll hopefully find someone soon. We'll keep our eyes open, right? All right. That wraps it up for your report. And we're sliding then to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Masalem.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Trustees, and the community. So I've got a couple of items to discuss this, uh, this evening. We have no action items. I have two informational items. First informational item is, I want to congratulate and thank Ms. Kathy Ann Gold for retiring after 25 years with the Crestwood School District as our Head Cook. We want to thank her for her continued support and her ability to work directly with all of our schools to ensure that our children were getting the high-quality and nutritious meal. So we wish Ms. Kathy Ann Gold the best in her retirement, and we thank her again for 25 years of service.
Yes.
Uh, Superintendent's Message. So a couple of things. First off, after fall of 2020 start, I know everybody out there is wanting to know, what's next? Where are we? And we're trying to keep everybody posted on what's happening. So the first thing is, school will begin. First week of school will be half-days for students in the AM. First day of school is Monday, August 31st through Thursday, September 3rd. Friday, uh, that Monday, we are off for the Labor Day recess. Schools will pick up again on September... Schools will pick up again on Tuesday, September 8th for online learning. I want to reiterate that the first week, August 31st through September 3rd, will be half-days and it'll be the AM only. So I'd like to just give some updates and some information on where we're at. And I'd like to talk about the scheduling and what's happening. So on a good note, uh, we got a lot of good notes. On a good note, I'd like to say the Crestwood High School schedule has been balanced and completed. Mr. Fabris will be updating and discussing some items with staff tomorrow. And the goal is by Wednesday or Thursday, students will have access to their schedule via MyStar, and more information will be coming. Riverside Middle School will also be ready, hopefully by Thursday, Friday of this week. Mr. Awada and his team at Riverside had to make some major adjustments, so it's taken a little time. But those adjustments, and we'd rather take our time and do it correctly, are going to be the betterment for all of our students and our staff. I do have a huge request for the community. All of the information that we have been sending out, we send out via email blasts, and then we also pull it on our social media, and then we send some things in paper version. We are... I am pleading to the community to ensure that your email is the correct email on Parent Connect. And if it is not, and you need some help ensuring that you have the correct email, please reach out to your school and speak with the school secretary, and they will support you in that process. Because what we do is, we send all information out via email blast, and it goes to the emails that are on file with MyStar. Sometimes you have to check your spam messaging because sometimes when things come out as a bulk email, some email servers see that as spam and they may put it in your junk folder. So double-check that. If you're not getting any emails, again, please call your child's school. And all you have to do is update it with one school, and it'll update MyStar for all schools that your children attend. But you can also do it via Parent Connect. So again, I am pleading to everyone, if you're not getting those emails, please update it through Parent Connect. Everything we put on social media, Facebook, wherever it may go, gets sent out in an email first. The first two weeks of school. So there will be a schedule coming out from every school this week, closer to the end of the week, about what the first two weeks will look like, about packet pickup and distribution. The Crestwood Schools, we have over 4,000 students. Yes, we're getting there. We're up in enrollment right now. But I would like everyone to know that we only have four or 500 Chromebooks on stock. But we have 3,000 Chromebooks that are on their way. 2,000 of those 3,000 Chromebooks will be here this week. Our team is ready to get them, image them, get them ready. Once they're ready, we will let everyone know, and there will be a schedule for Chromebook distribution. What we are doing for the first two weeks of school is, uh, it will be packet-driven as well as updates on the websites. And every teacher across the district will be contacting their students. There will be phone conversations. There will be constant messaging. So we promise you that by mid to end of this week, you will have the schedules on what the first two weeks of school will look like. We're finalizing all the details as we speak. And I assure everyone, everyone, the building administrators, the principals, they've been putting in, you know, 12, 14-hour days this last month, making sure everything is ready. So I promise, no one is sitting and twirling their thumbs. They're hustling. Uh, we got a call from our distributor for the Chromebooks on Friday. No, my apologies, on Thursday. And they said that our Chromebooks were shipped out of their warehouse, and they're on their way. So that's why we're hoping that we get them this week. We get them imaged, and we get them out to everyone. And for the families who completed the survey and requested the Instructional Day Program, we are going through that document right now. Dr. Lazar is working with our team and identifying Crestwood staff that are going... That is going to handle those positions. And we will be in contact with the families that made that request by the end of this week. But I do want to let everyone know that the Instructional Day Program will begin on Tuesday, September 8th. Okay? But more information will be coming. So to let everyone know again, by mid this week to latest of Friday, all schedules and information will be out and by each individual school. But please, to ensure that you get the information in a timely fashion, please ensure that your emails are updated in Parent Connect. And if you're having a problem with that, please call your child's school. I'm excited. Honestly, I think we're ready to roll. You know, I'm having sleepless nights. I'm not going to lie to you. So once those Chromebooks get here, every one of us is going to be working on them, getting them ready, and getting them out to the people that need them first. And again, with Chromebook distribution, Chromebooks will be distributed to those that are direct service or that have financial need, that have requested it, and then we're going to distribute to all. So there's... We got the process in praise, and we're just waiting for them to get here. That's my update, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Nadia, did you have something you wanted to say? I think you're...
That I dropped.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Yes. I just wanted to... I know you're going to do this, but I just wanted to ask. If we can't get ahold of the families, we will probably most likely send a letter to the families just to make sure that we contact them, correct?
Oh, of course, of course. No. Once... Yeah. Once we have our finalized schedules, we actually are working with one of our local printers. And if we can't get ahold of some families, we definitely... And here's another thing, Trustee Barry, that, and I want to thank the board again because you've allowed this to occur. With the additional positions that we added to our federal and state grants, the non-instructional positions like the liaisons, the restorative practice technicians, so on and so forth, they're going to be reaching out to every single family that we don't get ahold of. And that's why we felt that even though we're going online, these positions are crucial because that's another set of professional bodies to support our teachers and our students, you know, to help beyond just the instructional piece. So we have a game plan. We don't get ahold of you one way, I might even be knocking on your door.
Right. I wanted to ask because the person that we hired for truancy, he'll be involved too, correct?
So we... So it's not someone that we hired. It's someone that we're going to be putting on an hourly contract. And actually, we, just today, my right half, Mrs. Frzel, she actually reached out to him today to see, to get things situated and set up. So yes, our truancy person will be in touch with families to help as well in the beginning. It's all hands on deck, myself included.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, let me see here. At this time...
Oh, and Trustee, my apologies.
Go ahead.
I have this written down in front of me, and you know, I tend to forget things even when I write them down. I wanted to personally congratulate Trustee Janun on her appointment as the new school board trustee. Trustee Janun, I know you're going to be an excellent addition to our team. We... You and I have had so many conversations as a parent and as the PTA president. And I've always... And you'll learn about me. I don't say good things unless I mean it. I've always respected and appreciated your opinion, advice, and discussions because not only are you a board trustee and one of my bosses now, but you're also a parent. But we appreciate having you on, and I think you're going to be a great addition to our team. The board and myself is a great team of eight. The board, myself, Lyndon Penny are a great team of 10. The board, myself, Lyndon Penny, and all of the district staff is a great team of 300-plus. So we have a great team, and we're glad you're part of it.
Thank you. I'm excited.
I was... I had a similar speech, very similar, but not as eloquent. So we're all delighted. We're all delighted that you're with us. I know...
Thank you very much.
So many things. We've watched. You do everything. I've seen you everywhere. And you're going to be quite an asset to this board.
It's a little different, a little odd. It's going to take some getting used to. It's definitely... I was telling somebody today, I said, you know, I said something about the board, and I was like, oh, shoot. That's...
I am the board.
It wasn't a negative thing. It was just, you know, and I was like, oh.
Oh, you can't complain about the board anymore.
And I have no complaints. I am...
That's great.
I'm definitely excited, you know, that we have, you know, we're moving in the right direction.
Well, you jumped on at a good time because we are moving in the right direction. So... Um, is there any other... Anyone want to comment?
Madam Chair.
Madam President.
Okay, let's do this one at a time. Who wants that?
Colleen can go first.
Colleen, go ahead.
I just wanted to say to Najah, your kids were completely blessed when they were given to you because I've never seen a mom that takes out for her family more than you do. And that's what made me respect you the most because your kids are always in the forefront of what you do. And I am so happy that you're a member of our board. So congratulations.
Thanks, Colleen.
Nice.
You're welcome.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, I did. Please, if I can. I just... I do want to congratulate our new colleague and trustee. And I have a lot of faith that she's going to make the right decisions. And on a positive note with that, we were able to walk to, into Crestwood High School to check on things and into Riverside. And I have to tell you, the morale of the administration was breathtaking. I was really excited to see how excited they were. The Principal at Riverside, Ms. Marvaso, Ms. Sagh, Ms. Alice Rinkie. I mean, they... You could tell that they were feeling really good about this year, and they were very positive. So I wanted to give the administration kudos because you're working together, and that's what we needed. So thank you. And yeah, Mr. Fabris. I can't forget Mr. Fabris. So yes, it was a very positive visit. So thank you.
Isn't it so much better than having everyone grumpy?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, this is Kaminski.
I also want to extend my excitement that Najah Janun is on the board with us, and we get to work together. And I also have to say, this is the quietest I've ever seen Najah. I can't believe it. She hasn't said a word all day. Hold on. This was me being... I was like mute. I'm not used to being on this side yet, so it's going to take me a minute, but you know...
Her eyes were looking at everybody. She was paying close attention. Pretty soon, it'll be, will she ever stop talking?
I'm used to being told, you are not allowed to speak right now. So I'm like, am I allowed to speak? But no, I'll get there.
Thank you. Just raise your hand, and you'll get to speak.
I just wanted to say, welcome back to all of our families and our kids and our staff. And even though it's not a normal way that we normally see each other, we're excited. We're looking forward to a great year.
Yes, absolutely. And who knows, through this, we may learn something. Some good may come of it. It's a fluid situation. And if anyone can handle it, Crestwood can handle it because we can handle anything.
Crestwood's...
Madam President.
That's right. Yes, Mr. Garcia.
Uh, just two things. Number one, did we open it up for the community first if there were any questions before we went to the board?
This board just kind of jumped right in there. So I was going to ask Dr. Masalem if there were any questions that came in.
Uh, Mr. Green, do you have any questions? I know...
We have no public comments tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Madam President, I do have just a couple of things, if I could then. I just wanted to make sure that the public portion was not left out. Thank you. First, I just want to act with the sentiments of my colleagues and welcome Mrs. Janun to the Board of Education for Crestwood. This gives her an opportunity of working in a different... In a different position and overseeing the actual operations of the district, the intricacies of what takes place between the board, the administration, the administration and its staff, and how well everything works together. So congratulations, Madam Chair. Welcome to the board. And as everyone has said, it's going to be an exciting year and glad that you will be part of this new team and this excitement as we move forward. Again, welcoming all of our families and students. Yes, this is definitely going to be something different. But I know I've said this many times before. And thank you to Yusuf, your administration, most importantly, the fact that we've all worked together as a team with the CFT and ensuring the most important part is the education. But secondly, now the safety for the health and welfare of our students. There's no doubt in my mind that you and your administration will be at the very top, and other districts will want to mimic what it is that we are doing because we are doing it so well. So continue to do the good work. It's going to be a little bit of a change, but if anyone can handle it, there's no doubt that Crestwood can and Crestwood will, and we will prevail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Garcia.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes. I'm sorry, so...
That's okay. It's hard not seeing everybody on the screen. I'd also like to congratulate and welcome our new trustee, Najah. So welcome to the team. And I did also have a question about the truancy person that Yusuf was talking about. Will one of their duties, or one of their first duties, or at least part of it, be to check residencies? Because I have a feeling, especially in... Because I have a feeling, especially now, that some of our residents are probably not actual residents.
The role of our truancy person will be truancy, residency, as well as supporting us when there's issues where we need to coordinate liaison work between us and the Dearborn Heights Police Department. So yes, that will be one of the, uh, responsibilities.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Um, I wanted to thank, I think this came from HiView, which would be, um, Alice Rinkie. It's a report, can you guys see it? A report that we got in our packet and it's a, a posting title, it's the positions that are open, the positions that have been filled, um, interview completed, the date it was approved. This was really, and it's the position, not names, but the position that.
Wasn't that Ms. Lazar?
That was from Dr. Lazar, Madam President.
Well, well, this is fabulous, thank you so much because we, I don't ever, we never get this and it's nice to know what's, where we're at, you know, it's nice to know what's still open, um, what we, what we're still looking for. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize it was you, I was.
I was like, oh wait, did I share that on X?
I was going through the manifesto that I received, um, I thought, oh, that is really cool, it's really nice, I like that. Um, I also want to congratulate Mr. Filetti on, um, getting the job that he did. I think it's a perfect match because he is a numbers guy and that's what you need for a position like that, isn't that right, uh, Ms. Morgan? You need a numbers person to understand each other, don't you? Speak the same little weird little language, don't you? Okay, um, and Najah has something else to say.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, somebody had asked me, because when we were doing food distribution, um, in the past, in the spring, we used Dean Transportation to drop food off to families, are we, like families who could not, you know, get to the school? Are we still doing that? Will we be doing that? Okay.
Yes, actually, we're going to be doing almost exactly what we did during the spring except a little more efficient. And Dean's going to be, that was part of the contract agreement we worked on with them is that they're going to be supporting us with that transportation of food. Moreover, uh, I know Penny and I, we're, we're going to have a conversation with Dean as well at looking at mobile hotspots for people that need internet, so that's something we're going to be looking at as well. And now that, um, I'm breaking down all the data from the surveys, um, we're identifying where the areas are that we may be able to support with mobile hotspots. So more information to come.
Okay. You guys are doing a perfect, a wonderful job and the board is so receptive and so appreciative, I can tell. Um, we're moving forward, we're filling things we need to fill, we're eliminating positions that are redundant, we're moving, we're moving, uh, duties around and finding money that, that we were using, using erroneously in other areas and getting better and better. So just keep finding the money and, uh, and you'll keep us happy, you know.
Well, that, that's why Penny, that's why I tell everyone, Penny, I can say okay to buying something, but make sure Penny said okay first because I might say okay before Penny does. Do you make sure that we spend wisely?
You're in big trouble. So, um, that's all, I really don't have anything else if there's, uh, if we have a motion for adjournment?
Uh, trustee, uh, Barry had her hand up.
I had, I'm sorry, I had one more comment. I, it was refreshing to see the nice letters that we, we have received from staff and from, uh, some administration about the, uh, custodial operations, maintenance team, kudos to them, um, Ms. John's letter, Mr. Wada's letter. Uh, it's nice to see that people are seeing the difference and thank you to them for doing what they're doing and going above and beyond. And to hear that she has said that, uh, the fan or something in that classroom hasn't worked for 15 years and finally they took it up on themselves to make sure it was done, that's, that's the kind of teamwork that we want to see.
That's the kind of teamwork we want, that's right. People that just step in and then they're doing it, everybody's doing it, a good thing.
So thank you to Mr. Jacobs and his team, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so, um, if there's nothing further, we'll have a motion from someone?
So moved.
We have a motion for Mr. Garcia, supported by.
Aye.
Support. Um, was that you, Colleen?
Kaminski.
No, but I'll, I'll support.
Um, we'll give Kaminski support because we haven't given her anything else online. Supported by Mrs. Kuzanik.
You're right, Kaminski.
To be adjourned at 8 o'clock down the nose is what I've got, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have, thank you so much, everybody.
Have a great night.
Don't forget.
Bye.